The March 3rd, 2025 Board of Education meeting is called to order. I welcome everyone present. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education, and we are pleased that you have taken the time to join us. All board members are present this evening. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Latona, first item?
Pledge of Allegiance Northwest High School Color Guard.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors.
Carrie, colors. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Color guard, halt. Left, face. Present, colors. Ma'am. Northwest Color Guard requesting permission to post colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, ma'am. Order, colors. Post. Forward, march. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the Northwest High School Color Guard. Latona, next item?
Good News Elementary and Middle School Screener Growth.
Welcome Holly and Amanda. You're just hanging out?
It's our clicker. Good evening Superintendent Beilefeld, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Board. I'm here tonight to celebrate dedicated Wichita Public Schools staff and their students. Holly and I have the privilege of introducing some teachers and teams tonight from all over our district that have shown growth towards our strategic plan goals, both in elementary and middle school in reading and mathematics. And let them all come on down. It's always a great start to a board meeting to recognize our staff. So we're going to get started with our elementary staff. We really took a look at both A-reading as well as CBMR Growth. We looked at teachers who had moved students out of risk categories. We looked for teachers who had ambitious growth on those two screeners. And I'm going to start with Ashton Palmore. I wasn't sure if she was going to make it tonight, but she is at CMA. She's a third grade teacher, and her students succeed because she knows exactly where they're at and tailors her instruction to meet their needs. Her classroom is welcoming while still maintaining high standards for her students, but more importantly, she has the highest standard set for herself. And we're going to hold our applause until we have recognized all of our teachers. So Melinda Brown is our next teacher from McCollum Elementary. Her success can be credited to her intentional efforts to create a class community where she holds all students to high expectations. When you walk into her room, you can feel the structure she has created while also maintaining an atmosphere that makes learning fun. She ensures each student receives appropriate and differentiated instruction that promotes ambitious growth. Next, we have a two-fer. So we have Ashley Calli Dean and Melissa Greire from OK Elementary. So the fast bridge growth accomplished by Ms. Calli Dean's third graders is a result of her dedication, patience, and unwavering belief in her students' potential. She's created an environment where learning is both challenging and rewarding, and her ability to identify individual needs and provide tailored strategies for improvement was instrumental in helping raise test scores. So with her tonight is Melissa Greire. This is a really special thing for us. Melissa was Ashley's long-term substitute guest staff while she was out on maternity leave this year. So when we emailed her principal, her principal said yes, but also can we also recognize her sub who picked up where she left off and went full force? So we appreciate Melissa being here tonight and supporting Ashley's students as well. Deb Clark from Bostic. This year, third grade students have achieved exceptional growth, setting new records compared to past years in Deb's class, and this success is largely due to her efforts. Her classroom is characterized by consistent expectations and structure. Her patient and kind demeanor, along with her innate ability to connect, ensures that every student feels valued, which supports their remarkable academic progress. Then we have Carrie Pierce from Earhart Environmental Magnet Elementary. She's a future leader in our district. She's consistent and chooses not to settle for complacency in her students. She pushes students to stay engaged and utilizes the Earhart Magnet theme to enhance learning. She knows where they are academically and is able to share details with her colleagues as they all work to improve third grade results at Earhart. And we have Maria Magdaleno. Maria is a newcomer teacher at Washington Elementary. She sets very high expectations for her students, and she takes her own experiences as a newcomer herself from Mexico and applies this to her student learning. She sets goals to integrate her students into the regular education classroom from the onset. With her previous experience as a regular education classroom teacher, she is a pro at bridging both decoding and comprehension for student success. So those were our elementary growth teachers.
All right, so as we shift to middle school, we identified our three top middle schools on moving the most students from the risk categories to hitting the midbar on the AMath in their eighth grade students this year. So first off, we have Wells Alternative Middle School. Mr. Lawrenson is here. Wells has made an intentional effort to increase their focus on academic success for students and helping students believe in their ability to succeed, which at their school has been a great shift for them. They had a 7.7% improvement. Next up is Mead Middle School. We have a team here from there. They improved 9.9%. Mead Middle School teachers have worked to focus core and intervention supports to align instruction to meet the needs of their students and work as a team while also welcoming a large number of new students to their building this year. And last but not least is EI Academy, which I don't think we have anyone here tonight. They had a 14.3% improvement in the eighth grade students, and they've sought to intentionally support each student where they are at, even though that can be challenging in the virtual environment. Their staff seeks to engage students rarily, which again looks quite different in the virtual setting. So our three middle schools, great job.
Thank you for helping us recognize them tonight. They do a lot of hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much.
Latona, next item?
Award-winning Magnet Schools.
Welcome.
Do you want me to wait for everybody to come down, or do you want me to start?
We can go ahead and start. You can call your people down.
Good evening, President Albert, board members, and Superintendent Beilefeld. It's my pleasure to share with you good news about two award-winning magnets in our district. Magnet Schools America is a national nonprofit professional association that we belong to and guides our work in the Magnet Department. Every year, they award merit awards to top Magnet Schools in the nation. I've experienced helping to write for these awards when I was at a school, and I also helped some of our Magnet Schools write. And I've also judged submissions working for Magnet Schools of America and read submissions from hundreds of Magnet Schools around the nation. So given this experience on both sides of the process, I'd like to stress that this is not an honor that is bestowed on just anyone. These schools really are earning them. Our first Magnet School, Earhart Environmental Magnet, has been named a National Merit, excuse me, has been named a National Merit School Distinction for the fourth time. Earhart has been a magnet since 1977 and has a core group of teachers so dedicated to the theme that almost runs itself in some capacities. However, as strong as the program is, Principal Malgut has significantly raised the standard in his tenure there. He lives and breathes the theme and is evident to anyone he talks to or bugs incessantly to get what he needs to enhance his program. To receive one of these merit awards, schools must submit a detailed application explaining their integration of the Magnet theme, their implementation of innovative programs and instructional strategies, and their dedication to leveraging and celebrating diversity with an unwavering commitment to academic standards. Magnet Schools America has five pillars on which they base all of its work on. It's diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnerships. These pillars must be reflected in the application narrative and must depict a truly integrated experience for students. These schools are judged and scored on their demonstrated ability to decrease achievement disparity among demographic subgroups, promote racial and socioeconomic diversity, provide rigorous integrated curricula and instruction, and create strong family and community partnerships that enhance the school's Magnet theme. In addition to the merit award of distinction, there's also the merit award of excellence, which is only awarded to the best of the best Magnet Schools that scored just about perfect on the application. And I'm excited to share that Allison Traditional Magnet has received this honor for the second year in a row. They have also previously won the merit award for distinction three times, so this is their fifth time getting a merit award total, two of excellence. Allison has had four principals in seven years, which sometimes make it difficult for Magnet School to sustain a collective vision and continually refine and improve the theme. In similar circumstances at different schools that we've seen, whatever Magnet momentum exists typically gets lost in leadership transition, and that's no one's fault. It's just, you know, one principal starts one thing and has a vision, then someone else comes in and may not be aware of Magnet or just, you know, so it's kind of starting over from ground one sometimes, but from ground zero sometimes, but with Allison, like Earhart, their dedicated staff has invested in the school's traditional ethos, and all four of those principals have been able to jump seamlessly and help lead the way in further strengthening the Magnet culture there. So we're really proud of Allison and Earhart for getting these awards. All right, thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Okay, Latona, next item?
CTE Career and Technical Education Outstanding Senior Awards.
Welcome.
Thank you, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the Board. Tim Hamblin, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. And it is my privilege this evening to share some good news for my world, career and technical education. From this point on, I'll just refer to it as CTE for those in the audience that may not be familiar with it. But earlier this evening, we recognized and honored the 2024-2025 CTE Pathway Award winners. During a reception here at North High in the cafeteria, the CTE Pathway Award recognizes students that have completed three CTE credits and demonstrated outstanding performance in the mastery of competencies, pathway participation, CTE participation, and leadership in an approved CTE pathway. The selection process includes teacher nominations, eligibility verification, and student responses. The winners were determined by the pathway specialist that are members of the Office of College and Career Readiness. Each winner was presented an award that looks like this one here that we had made in district, so they're pretty cool, a certificate, and they are also being depicted here in a slideshow. I also have included the nominees from all of the different high schools. Obviously, we can't have 18 kids in one pathway be selected as a winner, but we wanted to recognize the students that were nominated. So we are certainly proud of all of the students that are nominated, and we know that the knowledge and the skills that they have learned through their career and technical education classes will serve them in their future endeavors. That's the kids, but none of their success would have been possible without some outstanding teachers as well. So if I may, I wanted to share a little good news about our teachers. First, Eric Gentilela was recognized as the 2024 Kansas Restaurant and Hospitality Association Pro Start Teacher of the Year. And that's a pretty big deal when you consider how many districts there are in the state of Kansas, so we're very proud of Eric. Joanna Farmer, last year was a Kansas Teacher of the Year finalist. Erin Hazelwood at East High School was the 2024 Skills USA Advisor of the Year. He was the 2024 AGC Build-Up Kansas Program of the Year. And last week, he was awarded a national award bestowed on only five educators in the United States of America. I am not at liberty to announce what that award actually is, who sponsored it, what he got. I will say he's buying lunch next time. But I think March 18th is when that will be revealed. But anyway, again, outstanding students, phenomenal educators. CTE is a, it is absolutely, it's a pathway for many young people that get connected to their schools. You've heard me talk about in the past graduation. 67% of the kids that drop out of high school make that decision before Thanksgiving of their ninth grade year. So if we can get them hooked in into a career and technical education pathway, and it's not just welding anymore. It is high-tech stuff, and even medical students. There were two students, both that applied, had very similar application, resumes, scores. One student was able on their essay to talk about their personal experiences they had having served as an EMT that they earned going through a career and technical education program. So I love it. CTE is awesome. It's new to me really, but I've enjoyed every second of it. I appreciate the opportunity to have it, to provide the programs for our kids. One other thing that the kids did get tonight, they were treated to some cookies that were made by our culinary students at Wichita West in Heights. So if you do not mind, I'm going to just go by. You can have one.
Thank you, Mr. Hamblin.
Latona, next item?
2024 Scholastic Art Awards.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Latona. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by thanking Marsha Skirfield, Visual Arts Curriculum Coach, for coordinating our slideshow, and to all WPS Visual Arts faculty who submitted incredible digital images on the screen. As I am sharing this year's scholastic updates, please enjoy our award-winning artwork. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which is the oldest and most prestigious recognition program for creative teenagers in the United States, are presented by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers. The Alliance is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to identify students with exceptional artistic talent and present their remarkable work to the world through Scholastic Art Awards. The Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Awards exhibition showcases selected artworks created by middle school and high school students from 70 Kansas counties. The awards give students opportunities for recognition, exhibition, publication, and scholarships. Participants supported by their visual arts teachers and other community members create and submit their best works of art. Each work is reviewed by a panel of arts professionals for originality, technical skill, and the emergence of personal vision. This year, 2,119 individual submissions were submitted for the Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Award. Of those 2,119, 490 student works were selected for the show. And as was pointed out earlier, that's only about two artworks selected for the show for every nine artworks submitted. Of those 490 works selected for the 70 Kansas counties, of those 490 works, 221 entries were from the Wichita Public Schools. This represents 154 high school student artists guided by 28 WPS Visual Arts instructors representing all seven WPS Comprehensive High Schools and Northeast Magnet, which for the fourth year in a row, I call these the Elite Eight. This year's district-winning artwork is featured in all categories: honorable mention, silver key, gold key, and American Vision nominees. And for the second consecutive year, if anybody wants to give a drum roll, 45% of the 70-county Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Awards are from the Wichita Public Schools. This statistic is worth celebrating. I also want to recognize others that continually support our students: parents, family members, school and district staff and administration, and of course, tonight, Strategic Communication, Alicia Allen and her wonderful colleagues organized tonight's excellent reception, and those CTE cookies are scrumptious. Finally, many thanks to the Board and district leadership for once again supporting our Wichita Public Schools' excellent representation at this year's Scholastic Art Awards. And if anyone here tonight would like to see more art, you can view the exhibition on display at Mark Arts, 1307 North Rock Road, 13th and Rock, until March 29th, when the closing ceremony will be held and numerous college scholarships will be awarded. Last year, an unprecedented $3.4 million were awarded in college scholarships, and we know we'll have many WPS offers coming. But for now, please join me in one final round of applause for our award-winning students and their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Latona, next item?
United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Katie.
Good evening. Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, and distinguished BOE members. Tonight, I'd like to address the newly-launched Department of Education website form that encourages parents to report school districts for teaching certain content, specifically critical theory, rogue sex education, and divisive ideologies. The press release promoting this form includes a statement from the co-founder of Moms for Liberty. She asserts that these concerns have been dismissed and urges parents to document what she calls a betrayal of public education. She further claims that this webpage is a move to restore parental controls over education. I've been in Wichita Public Schools for 20 years, and I can say with absolute certainty that our teachers in USD 259 are not betraying our students. Our educators dedicate their time, energy, and passion to ensuring that every single child receives a high-quality education, one rooted in critical thinking, academic excellence, and the skills needed to thrive. But let's be clear, vague and politically-charged phrases like critical theory, rogue sex education, and divisive ideologies serve only to stoke fear and confusion. What we do know is that our teachers follow our state standards. We expect and trust that this school board will support our educators in ensuring that history is taught accurately, that our debate and speech teachers can foster critical thinking through discussion, that programs like Second Step and Human Growth and Development remain part of our curriculum, and that our teachers are never punished for teaching critical thinking skills to our students. Our teachers show up every single day to do what's right for kids. They deserve respect, not baseless accusations for attending to state standards. We know that when parents and teachers are partners, our students thrive. Our classrooms should be spaces for learning, not arenas for political agendas that foster the very division that this policy appears intended to create. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Latona, next item?
Service Employees International Union.
I do not see a representative from SEIU. Next item?
Public Communications.
So for Public Communications, we want to thank you guys for joining us tonight. If you have signed up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak, and we kindly ask that you acknowledge your allotted time according to the timer displayed on the screen. We encourage you to share your thoughts openly and honestly, but we ask that your remarks remain focused on school-related matters and are respectful and constructive. The Board will listen to your input, but will probably not respond during this meeting. However, we are listening carefully and may follow up as appropriate. So we welcome our first speaker.
Chloe House.
Is Chloe present tonight? Our next speaker?
Dave Fish.
Welcome.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, Board of Education Representatives and District Leadership Team. I'm Dave Fish. This is my wife, Marty. We're here to address the failed Facility Master Plan, the rejected 225-25 bond proposal, and our strong opposition to the closure of OK Elementary. The Board's responsibility, as elected officials, the BOE must act on the outcome of the rejected bond plan. You have the authority and responsibility to develop a new plan with better communication, transparency, and the use of available resources. The time to start revisions is now. One year ago, the BOE voted to close six schools citing budget deficits, aging buildings, and declining enrollment. The closure process moved fast with little public involvement. After closing heavily, the BOE allowed a final walkthrough two months later. The Facility Master Plan, approved in August, proposed rebuilding seven new schools and closing four more, including OK Elementary. Opposing, we, along with area educators in our neighborhoods, strongly oppose an OK closure. The plan was fast-tracked with Ohio consultants and local builders pushing for closures while constructing new schools. The claim that OK Elementary must close regardless of the bond vote is flawed. The rejected plan means the plan must be revisited. Facts about OK. Extensive renovations in 2000, 2008 made OK a modern, well-equipped school. It's not outdated, does not fit the 60-year-old narrative used to justify closures. OK Elementary has a history of academic excellence, serving gifted and special needs students with strong support. OK could be considered for a math, reading, science magnet designation instead of closure. OK has served its neighborhood location for nearly 150 years. Families have settled into... Families have settled in the area expecting long-term stability and didn't expect closure talk and busing children elsewhere. Some families and educators are considering a move to other districts for stability. Teachers, WSU survey found two-thirds of the Wichita teachers believe the district is headed in the wrong direction. And 82% of those surveyed said their building was a good place to work. Educators and administrators were among the strongest opponents that I talked with.
Thank you, Mr. Fish.
Pardon?
Thank, your, a lot of time is up. If you have a typed statement, you're welcome to give-
I have two sentences for closing.
Go for it.
Closing statement. OK Elementary has been the community cornerstone for 150 years at its locale. We urge the board to stop its closure and instead provide the leadership that this district, its schools, and its families deserve.
Thank you very much.
There are also PowerPoint presentations for all of you.
We appreciate-
That goes into detail.
We appreciate your information. Latona, next speaker? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to get up here and speak. And I recognize the president and the board members. I appreciate it. It's, I'm up here about this. I also, you have my information, but I'm a OK PTA person, former parent, site council. I was on Judy George's bond team in 2000 that got it done. So I'm not against anything to do with schools whatsoever. All my kids have gone through WPS. So I'm here to talk about the school, and my perspective is, OK is the best school not to close. We've had all these upgrades in between with these bond issues. And we have, there's some issues in there that could be worked on to make things better. But we also have the capacity, 450, to handle growth with consolidation of schools. The location, it's pretty, you know, you jump two feet over one way, you're headed south on west. Jump another block over, you're getting on the bypass for school buses. The site allows for expansion into the playground field, which we didn't do in 2000 because the architects wanted to split it. And we said, well, how are we going to manage recess out there? We're going to have two teams. We told them no. We flipped the team, Judy's team, flipped the site around to match what is there today. We did that because that's what the school needed. Anyhow, the site also allows for bus capability off of West Street. West Street's fast-moving, but there are other schools, I believe it's Allison, use the cut-in routes for the buses and out with, I think, a pretty decent safety record. On the other hand, closure, then what happens? Do we demolish a perfectly good building? It's not one of the 80 to 100-year-old specials that we're talking about. But do we demolish it with the capacity that needs a little TLC on that place, and that's it? It's got special needs. It's got the 150 or 160 mile an hour multipurpose room already. That was originally done in 2000. Or, you know, we just sell it to a developer for a dollar or so, and they come in and decide that they're going to put a 50-unit rental housing development there, which will kill that neighborhood. It will kill valuations. It will kill folks coming in with children as well, from our perspective. What else? Maintenance. It's been said many times, and by the way, all this data, and if I say a number, it comes out of WPS literature, presentations, whatever, none are made up by myself. But maintenance, it's been said these buildings have not been maintained or maintenance has been deferred. Well, that was a key item in 2000 as well. And our perspective was, get those windows in, get the AC, start maintaining this stuff, and we'll be good for a long, long time, which is our goal on anything, get the most bang for the buck.
Thank you, sir.
But anyhow, we've heard that there's 200 million to 464 million, depending on which number you read-
Thank you.
-of deferred maintenance. Am I done?
Yeah.
Ah, shucks.
You're welcome to contact the board members by email or share any information that you have further.
Okay.
Thank you very much for being here this evening and speaking to us. Latona, next speaker?
Ulysses DeShaver. Seeing none. John Williams.
Next speaker?
Seeing none. Frances Jackson.
I'm referring to Winnebago. Holloway, Geneva Holloway.
I'm here concerning the teachers. I'm not going to name any teachers or any schools, but I don't know whether you're aware that we have so many teachers that's leaving the system. Some is retired, but some is leaving because of behavior of children in schools. Are you aware of that? And the other thing is that some of the schools' teachers tell me that the staff is not supportive of them, you know? When you're having behavior problem in the classroom, you can't teach the other kids. So if you keep sending the kids to the office and they keep sending them back, they don't send them. So are you aware of these things that's happening? And would you please check into it and see what we can do about it? Now, this is K through five. We should not be having these kind of problems in school. So I know it's a parent problem, but we need to get together and see how we're going to handle it and save our teachers and see why them they left and what we can do to get them back. So I thank you, and I pray that you will listen and pay attention and see why so many teachers is leaving the schools and what is the reason, and see what we can do to get some of them back and see what we can do about the behavior problem in these classrooms. And I'm going to repeat again, K through five. And I'm a witness, three or four years ago, before the virus, I volunteered in the school. So I know how it was then, so I can't even imagine what it's going to be like now. Because I was with reading kids two or three times a week. And a fourth grader come in there at my table and flipped my table. And they didn't do anything, just sent him out and brought him back, back to him the next day. So that was four or five years ago. So just think about what it's like today. And I would say if you all could visit the school, see for yourself what's going on in the schools, and see why our teachers is leaving and what we can do to get them back and why. Number one is why they left in the beginning. So I just ask you to do that. We're going to be praying for you all, that our school will be better.
Thank you very much.
I have one last speaker.
Next speaker?
Is there a microphone that you could bring to Mr. McAfee?
Welcome.
My name is Charles McAfee. I'm 92 years old, almost 93. But more importantly, I'm here to talk about Lowry School. You have been passed out some individual prints. I want to tell you what they are. If you start at the bottom where the road, he was in, that's 13th Street. The top is 17th Street. The Olberture is right there. What I want to call your attention to is the historic district. I designed all of the early buildings in here. Down at the bottom, there's a baseball park called Robert Thurman. He was the first African-American to ever go into the professional baseball teams. Right in front of that, there is a seven or eight-foot-tall marble structure. It's called the Double V. It was started by a bunch of ladies older than me who are no longer here. The Double V stood for Victory in Europe and Victory at Home, early, early Wichita civil rights. You go on a little further up. One of the guys who was one of your most dedicated employees, Charles Goose Doughty. While he was a teacher at Lowry School, he used to bring tennis rackets out at recess and teach the kids how to play tennis, Charles Doughty's Tennis Center. 25 years, regional tennis tournaments are there in his name. Right outside the east door of Lowry School is a place called McAfee Pool, named after Charles McAfee. On up the way, I'm going to tell you a little more about a couple more of these. On up the way is the addition, $10 million addition that is being constructed right now by the city of Wichita, named after the former mayor, Carl Brewer. Go further on up to 17th Street. Most of you heard about the Jackie Robinson statue being stolen and dismembered. Now, what I'm going to tell you about the rest of this. All of the professional football or baseball teams sent thousands of dollars in here to redo that. So this area has all kinds of national money, serious national money. The McAfee Pool was one of only eight awards given by the Ford Foundation. I made a trip out of Wichita one day, picked up my daughter, who runs our Atlanta office. Went into New York, came right back. I had both the COVID and the flu. That's what's wrong with me.
Mr. McAfee?
Let me just finish. The Ford Foundation put up money to upgrade the pool along with the Getty Foundation, the two biggest organizations in the country that do that. What we want to do is surround Lowry School with Barry Sanders Field to the south and all the rest of it, McAdams Park. McAdams was named after Emerson McAdams, a former police officer who became the manager when I was a little boy of this park. I went to the city council, got that name changed. What we want you to do is not do anything with Lowry School without talking to a group of us setting up there and over there and over there. Because we're very interested. My wife was a student as a little girl there. But more importantly, she was a principal of that same school.
Thank you.
You closed the school on Monday, on Friday, and she opened Beach Elementary on Monday. That was our vacation. I thank you very much for your time. Please don't do anything to Lowry without contacting me. It's a great group of people. We have all kinds of concepts to do things with it.
We thank you for being here, Mr. McAfee. And you're welcome to reach out to me. I'd be happy to, be happy to sit down with you guys. So thank you very much. We appreciate you being here this evening. Latona, next item?
Strategic Plan Goal One, Progress Monitoring, High School Interim Goal One.
Welcome, Lauren.
All right. Lauren, Dr. Hatfield is rolling solo, looks like, tonight. This is one of our interim goal updates about ACT and ACT work keys, and I'll pass it off.
Before I get started, last time they told me I had a booming voice and I needed to move the mic back. So if they are waving at you up there, it's probably about me.
You're getting a thumbs up.
Okay, good, excellent. Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, members of the board. I'm excited to be with you, be with you tonight to give you an update on Goal Number One, interim goal specifically for the high school. You're actually going to get interim goal updates for all of the levels, but Holly and Amanda, follow me with the update for middle school and elementary school. We're going to pull the high school goal by itself because it's very different than what the interim goals are for elementary and middle. So it's been a minute. Hopefully, we've all slept at least a couple times since the last time that we talked about this. So I want to give you just a reminder about what this is about and then update you on where we are. So our big overarching goal for the strategic plan and Goal Number One is about increasing graduation rate and to increase the graduation rate from 79.2 to 85% by 2029. So just as a grounder, what I speak about, what Holly and Amanda are going to speak about in the presentation following mine, all falls underneath this academic achievement goal. So everything that we're talking about from now forward all drives to increasing the graduation rate. So under that, there are interim goals. And the high school interim goal is about the ACT and the ACT work keys. So the specific high school interim goal is to increase the percent of unique students scoring a 21 or higher on the ACT or scoring a silver or higher on the ACT work keys from 34.2% to 37.7% by the spring of 2025. We are here in the spring of 2025, and so we need to know, did we hit that 37.7%? I will tell you, we will always kind of get a backflow of data from the ACT. And so that 34.2% that was set last spring, after we got the backflow of data from the ACT through the summertime, that actually ended up being a bit lower than 34.2%, and actually was about 33.8%. But we didn't feel like we needed to adjust 37.7% because the X value or the starting value actually was a little bit lower than 34.2, it was 33.8. But we still wanted to hit the 37.7. So you're going to see a number later, and you're like, why isn't that 34.2? It's because we got ACT scores from over the summer that were connected to the class of 2024 that changed that data a little bit. So we'll update you on that. So, all right. So there's an or statement in that goal. Part of it's about the ACT, part of it's about the ACT work keys. So I thought it might be easiest if we talk ACT data, and then we talk ACT work keys data, and then we put them both together to try to level-set and understand the two different tests. A lot of people are really familiar with the ACT. Less people are familiar with the ACT work key, so that does give us a chance to balance out both. So we're going to start with the ACT and give you some information just about percentage of kids in Wichita Public Schools in the classes of 23, 24, and 25 that have chosen to take the ACT. Wichita Public Schools began offering the ACT free to all students in the spring of their junior year in the 2019-2020 school year. So we've been offering this opportunity to our junior students. Just last week, our class of 26 juniors had their ACT day. Obviously, their data is not included in this because it just happened, but we have that testing day every year. Now, some students don't choose to test on that testing day. They may choose to test on Saturdays, or they might take our district testing day plus test on Saturdays, those sort of things. All of the scores from any testing date are included in our data as long as the school, as long as the kids report them to us. We get them automatically if they're on our testing day. It's up to the kid to report the scores to us on the Saturday test. So we actually don't get all the Saturday test data for the ACT. So we're holding steady, right around 72% of our juniors are choosing to take the ACT. And I say juniors because most students take it their junior year, and that's when we offer it for free. But these are classes of, so these are class of 25 would be students who graduated last year, 24 the year before that, But these are classes of, so these are class of twenty-five would be students who graduated last year, twenty-four the year before that, twenty-three the year before that. So, here is our data, uh, for the ACT on the post-secondary asset percentage. So, in order to get a post-secondary asset, which our class of twenty-eight kids have to get at least two of those to graduate from high school, that's the new graduation requirements, but we're trying to condition everybody to this post-secondary asset language, you have to earn a twenty-one or higher on the ACT to earn that asset. That's why twenty-one plus is what's in the goal. This past year, we had four hundred thirty-eight students in the class of twenty-twenty-five so far earn a twenty-one or higher. So, you can see that's just over eighteen and a half percent of our kids that take the test earn the post-secondary asset. Um, we do not have average scores for 2025. Uh, the state will not publish that data until well after the class of twenty-five graduates. Uh, but something that I think is cool to see in the data is that massive jump in percentage who earned a twenty-one or higher and our massive jump in average score, um, from twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, what's interesting is we jumped by almost a point, and the state average on the ACT dropped by point two. Um, so we definitely, uh, made some pretty substantial improvements, especially compared to the rest of the state for our average score in 2024. So, we don't have an average score yet. And I wanted to wait until the state publishes that number, um, to, until we gave it to you. Especially, you know, when you, we have our own ways of calculating it, um, but again, we don't get all the scores. And so, but the state of Kansas does, and so they, they have a way of parceling that data out, and I want to make sure we're comparing to comparing. Um, a few things that I want to let you know about the ACT is this April, they're gonna start changing the ACT. So, there have been no changes to the ACT for a very long time. Uh, handful of years ago, they averaged, they added an optional writing portion. But I want to be clear that when 2026 data comes, it's not going to be the same ACT test that most of us in this room probably took. Um, so let me just walk through those changes just so that you're aware. Um, and this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to talk, um, with our students and families about as well. So, currently, there are four sec- there are four tests, four sections that are mandatory on the ACT. There's reading, there's math, there's English, and there's science. Those are the current four. Starting in April, the science will become optional. So, that will not be counted in the composite score anymore because it's an optional test. So, now they will only be averaging English, math, and reading, starting in April, for your composite ACT score. There's a very big difference than ACT previously. ACT scored on a thirty-six point scale, and to get your composite score, what you see up there as a fifteen point nine or a sixteen point seven, they just average your scores together on the section. So, right now, they're averaging four sections together to get your composite score. Starting in April, they're gonna average three sections together to get your composite score. The length of the test will also shorten. Obviously, the length in the test will shorten because the science part is taken out, but they're also shortening the reading and English sections. So, right now, it takes about a hundred and ninety-five minutes to take the ACT. Starting in April, it's gonna take about a hundred and twenty-five minutes to take the ACT, so the test is gonna get shorter in terms of length, and it's also gonna get shorter in terms of number of questions. So, you'll get, so the kids will have more time per question, starting in April compared to previous ACTs. So, there's gonna be about forty-four less questions in the English math si- or English math reading sections added together than there are currently right now on the ACT. And then the math section, right now, there's five answer choices for every single question on the math test. It'll go down to four. So, that's, that's another change. Lots of changes are gonna start happening in April to the ACT test. It is still nationally normed. It is still gonna be scored on a scale of one to thirty-six. It is still gonna be based on ACT college and career, cu- career readiness benchmarks. They're still gonna be averaging your scores on the mandatory sections together to get your composite score, and the level that you have to achieve to be, uh, college-ready is going to remain the same. So, let's talk about why it's a twenty-one. On each of the tests, there is a number that they've come up with through studies, and if you are a nerd and curious, I can send you the study via email, because I have it, uh, about how they created these benchmarks. But they've done studies to figure out, if you hit this ACT score, you have a seventy-five percent chance or higher of getting a C or higher on a college course with no intervention, no remediation, no tutoring, no nothing. You could walk into a college course tomorrow and get a C, seventy-five percent chance or higher of getting a C or higher. So, that's what these mean. The English one is eighteen. So, each of the little tests have their own number. So, the English number is an eight, the English benchmark is an eighteen. The math benchmark is a twenty-two. The reading benchmark is a twenty-two. The science benchmark is a twenty-three in the current test. If you average those, twenty-one composite gets you, you could walk into college tomorrow and they're saying, look, you've got a seventy-five percent higher or higher chance of getting a C or higher in the classes that you're about to walk into in college with no tutoring, no remediation, no intervention. So, that's why the post-secondary asset is a twenty-one plus, and that's why we pick twenty-one plus. So, just wanted to do some level setting of, I'm gonna come back at some point with more ACT data, and we're not gonna be comparing the same ACT tests that these three are. They're still gonna be nationally normed, scored similarly, but it's not gonna be apples to apples, starting with the class of, uh, not really twenty-six, because the class of twenty-six just took their big, it's really not gonna be till the class of twenty-seven when that data really starts showing up. But if you've got a kid in the class of twenty-six who, in June, takes the ACT on a Saturday, the new version is out. So, just wanted to give you some level setting related to the ACT. All right, let's talk about work keys. All right, the work keys, here's our percentage tests, percentage of kids tested. Um, we offer the work keys for free to all senior students in the fall of their senior year. So, this fall, we had two thousand two hundred and seventy-three of our seniors came to school on the day we did this test and took the test, um, which is a significant improvement in the last couple of years. This is only the third year we have offered the work keys for free to our students. The first year we did that was the fall of twenty-three. So, this is very new data, a very new test, and a test that people still aren't really quite sure what it does, which means we have work to do. But I am very happy to see that giant improvement. Um, shout out to our high schools for helping communicate the value of our students showing up and taking the test on our testing day in October. So, let's talk about how many kids earn the post-secondary asset. We are holding steady at right around forty percent of students earning the asset, um, which because we had a significant higher number of kids take it, means a significant higher number of kids earned the asset. Here's why that data's kind of neat. Typically, when you massively expand your group of people that take the test, the achievement in that test drops because you've instantly doubled, for easy math, it's not really double, but let's call it double, the number of kids that take it, right? Typically, you will see a performance drop. What is a fascinating thing to me is we had thirty percent more kids take the test, twenty-two, right, percent, and we still had about forty percent of our kids earn the asset. Now, do we obviously want that forty percent to continue to drive higher? Sure, but that is an interesting piece of data, um, to note. Uh, because work keys isn't as familiar to everyone, again, let's just go through the test. There are three sections on the work keys. I will also say, we had quite a, quite a time with the work keys this year. There, the, the testing site crashed on the day we took the test, so we had to do like some retests and some things. So, I actually think our students probably would have done a little bit better, but we had to, uh, their testing environment was disrupted on this day, and our schools did as best of a job as they could about facilitating the test when the, the, the test site crashed for about an hour on the morning that they were in taking the test. So, it was, it, it was a little nerve-wracking. Uh, but it's, uh, there's three thi- there's three sections. There's applied math, there's workplace documents, and there's graphic literacy. Those are the things they test in the work keys. And the, what the work keys is designed to do is how prepared are you to enter the workforce and have the job skills that you need to be successful in that job? So, the ACT is more about, are you prepared to go into a college class and be successful? The ACT work keys is, are you prepared to enter the workforce or college, because you'll go to the workforce at some point, and be prepared with the skills that you need to be successful? That's what the work keys is. It is scaled on a score of sixty-five to ninety. It doesn't start at zero, you can get a sixty-five to a ninety. And then they take that sixty-five to ninety and they change it into a level, which is a zero through seven. Unlike the ACT, you don't average your scores together, right? So, the ACT, you average your scores, average the four. In the work keys, you have to get a certain level on all three sections to qualify for that post-secondary asset. So, I'll give you an example. A bronze level, which is not a post-secondary asset, you have to get a three or higher on all three tests to be able to qualify for a bronze. So, it's not an average, it's you've gotta get that number on all three tests, which is different than an average. Uh, to get a silver or higher, which is what the post-secondary asset is, you've gotta get a four or higher on all three. There's a gold level, you've gotta get a five or higher on all three, and then there's a platinum level, you've gotta get a six or higher on all three. So, it's different scoring mechanisms than the ACT. And the reason why silver plus is the post-secondary asset, so a bronze level, it, their, their research shows you are prepared for sixteen percent of the jobs. You can go in sixteen percent of the jobs, you have the skills you need for sixteen percent of jobs to be successful in those jobs. Sixteen percent's pretty low, which is why bronze is not the post-secondary asset. The difference between a bronze and a silver is massive. Silver is sixty-seven percent. It's a massive jump. So, if you have a silver or higher, so that's forty percent of our kids, sixty-seven percent of the jobs, you're ready to walk into that job and have all the skills you need to be successful in that job, sixty-seven percent. Then the jump to gold, gold is ninety-three percent of jobs, and then platinum is ninety-nine percent of jobs. So, it's this huge, massive jump between those levels. So, work keys is not as familiar to everybody. We have to keep talking about what the work keys is and why it's valuable. And you get a certification. Hey, I got a silver or higher certification on the ACT work keys. That means something to employers, that, we used to not have like a, am I job ready? Um, we have certifications for different things, but this is just a general, I'm job ready. So, that's what the work keys is. So, that's just a little level setting on, here's our ACT data, here's our ACT work keys data. Let's put them together on that, on that OR statement, shall we? All right. So, in 2023, we had two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven students that took either the work keys or the ACT, or both. They had to take at least one. Three hundred and fifty-one of those students got a twenty-one or higher on the ACT. Two hundred and sixty-three of them got a silver or higher on the work keys. Seven hundred and sixty-six got either the ACT or the work keys or both. So, how do we create our percentage that's in the goal? It's the seven sixty-six divided by the two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven, right? So, that's where the thirty point three one percent comes from. So, the first year we took this with kids, right, twenty twenty-three is the first year we offered work keys to kids. Less than fifty percent of our seniors took it, thirty point three one percent earned an asset. Last year, this is where the original goal had a thirty-four point two number in the twenty twenty-four line, but we had some backflow of ACT data, um, from the state, and so it was actually thirty-three point eight one. This year, through the data that we have right now with the class of twenty twenty-five, thirty-nine point zero one percent of the class of twenty twenty-five has earned the post-secondary asset in either the ACT or the work keys or both. And if you remember, earlier, I circled a number that was thirty-seven point seven, and that number is higher than thirty-seven point seven. So, we've got some choices to make, uh, later this summer. Do we raise it? Or do we go after something else in that high school goal? Those are things that we'll get to decide later. Whether we raise it or whether we go out, go after something else, we still want to drive success on the ACT and on the ACT work key. So, let's talk about how we're gonna do that. Something that Holly may or may not talk to you about later, um, but, um, our Learning Services team has been working really hard on language comprehensions and how, what we can do for language comprehension in the secondary level. Uh, because content starts to become king when you move into the secondary world, and we would like to work on language comprehension, but it doesn't matter what you teach, right? We want a language comprehension, uh, routine that helps the math teacher and helps the PE teacher and helps the music teacher, et cetera. So, um, our Learning Services team, um, connected to the letters work and the science of reading, has developed a structured literacy vocabulary routine, and we are going to roll this out in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, very excited about that. Um, language comprehension will help everything. And everything you teach has language in it, and so we're very excited about that opportunity. So, lots more to come, um, on that, um, and I don't want to take away any of the amazing things Holly may or may not share, either tonight or in the future. So, number two is we need to keep sharing the relevance and value of the ACT work keys with students, staff, and families. It is still new on the scene. We still need to keep talking about it. Because there's still a whole lot of people that are like, what is this? Right? And I think we were able to incentivize kids, uh, to show up on that day, but I think we need to do a better job of matching the incentive with some intrinsic motivation of, oh, okay, that's what that's for, and that's why that's valuable. We, we have more work to do there, for sure. The third one, um, we need to talk about the changes that are coming to the ACT with students, staff, and families as well. There's a lot goes into preparing to si- in sitting, um, for those national standardized tests, and it's gonna look and feel different. I think for a long time, we've kind of been able to rest on our laurels maybe on the ACT because it has been. But now that it's changing, our communication game has got to step up related to that, so our students and families are prepared as possible going into that test. And then last but not least, um, we use advocacy for a variety of reasons, and, um, we would like to create a score analysis and debrief lesson for both the ACT and the ACT work keys through advocacy. We have a ACT testing day in the spring of junior year. We know about when we get the results. We could put, plug in an advocacy lesson about the ACT score, debrief and analysis, and what does it mean? And what might you need to do if you were this close, um, to earning that post-secondary asset? Uh, hot off the presses, um, the state also might provide us a, a, a couple hundred extra free licenses, um, for the ACT starting next year, so we might be able to say, Timmy, Timmy, my man, you were so close to getting that post-secondary asset. You want to take it again? I got a free license for you so that you can take it again. Um, so, we're looking at how we could use that. And then same thing for the work keys. We know when the kids take it, we offer it in October. We know when we're gonna get the results. We get the results of that very quickly. Let's plug in an advocacy lesson for the seniors so they can get their scores and really understand, what does this mean? How do I put it on my resume? How do I talk to people about it? Um, those are things that build innate value in the tests for kids, um, so that there's a higher desire for the kids to, intrinsically to do better on the assessments. So, I'm excited, uh, about the data that we've seen and excited about the progress we can continue to make, uh, for ACT and ACT work keys, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, I just want to, a couple comments in closing, and I've, you, you might have heard me say some of this before, but I, I think it's worth reiterating as, around ACT specifically. You've seen since 2020 in the state of Kansas, a decrease in the average score for kids, um, overall in the state as far as, uh, scores for the ACT. At that same time, you've seen a, um, doubling almost of participation. So, when you compare state to state specifically on ACT, those states that have very low participation, i.e., they're only testing kids who know they're going to college, around thirty percent of kids, their ACT average score is, is pretty high, right? We are trying to test every kid. That's really our goal. We're up to, I mean, those numbers are good in the, in the seventies. And there's more that take it than that. The way Lauren explained, did we capture that? But, um, I think it's important to know, um, and part of the philosophy behind why is the same reason we want every kid to fill out a FAFSA, because you may fill out a FAFSA and realize you have a route to go to college that you didn't realize was there before. You may take an ACT and realize, I'm academically ready to go to You may take an ACT and realize, I'm academically ready to go to college and I didn't think I was. Um, another thing is these are averages. We're talking about big clumps of kids. So, is it true that if you get a twenty on the ACT, you will fail at college? No, of course not. I mean, that, that isn't true. So, keep that in mind. Sometimes the narrative around these things is, um, you know, if we have forty percent of kids that get either the work keys or the ACT, the, uh, post-secondary asset, that means sixty percent are failing, which couldn't be further from the truth. So, in the recent conversations around achievement that we've been hearing, uh, around the BON campaign, that was the implication that if you didn't score proficient, you were failing. Um, and that, that, that is not a true assumption. Um, I also want to say, um, our district, uh, Lauren mentioned it, but our district average jumped, uh, almost a full point this last year. Um, it's been kind of teetering since, uh, COVID and we aren't, we're almost back to pre-COVID numbers. Um, but the, the gap, the distance between the state average and the district average, um, has never been smaller since twenty seventeen. So, in a lot of ways, we're closing that gap with the state, if the state average is our goal and we want to get all of our buildings and all of our kids up to the state average, um, we're closer to that than we have been in the last eight years, um, which says a lot about the direction we're headed. Um, I, I love the priorities and the, the strategies about moving forward, especially with vocabulary routine. I think that is heading in the right direction. So, um, I just wanted to provide a little bit of that bigger picture context for some of these things. Um, because I do feel like this, these tests are a much more valid measure of what a kid knows and is able to do than, uh, the one-time state assessment that they take their sophomore year. Um, the, the, this really indicates if a kid is ready for college and ready to be successful and ready for the workforce. And I would end by saying this, this is also a really good reality check for kids. Right? That if I think I'm college bound, or I think I'm ready for the workforce and I get, I get, you know, clear data that says, ooh, I've got more work to do. Um, especially with the work keys, you can really research any career and it will tell you that one through seven scale that Lauren talked about. If you want to be a botanist, it'll give you on the three areas of the test, where you need to be to be able to be a successful botanist. Um, so as kids dream and as kids think about their future, um, they can also, you know, either, I always say you either change what you're doing or change what you want. Um, so as a kid, if I want to be a blank and my scores show that I'm here, I need to change what I'm doing. I need to work harder to get up to that level to, to, to achieve that. Or I change what I'm doing. I want to go a different route in life. So, um, these, these tools really should be conversational, back to our advocacy. Uh, I, I mean, I think that's years down the road, but that's really where we want to get with this. Is teachers having conversations with kids about where do you want to be in your future? And what is, what does your achievement show that you're on track to be able to do or not do? So, great presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Dr. Hatfield for your presentation. Kathy?
A very educational tool. And I think there's been a misconception with these kinds of figures out in our community. So I'm really glad that you were able to describe it in a layman's way that we can understand it. Could you define what a unique student is?
Yeah, so there are, we don't want to count the kid twice if they've taken both tests. So, right, so if you've, you took the ACT and the work keys, we don't want you to count, you, count you twice in the denominator because that's messing the math up. So, unique students are kids that took either the ACT or the work keys, or they took both.
And do they have to take both at the same time or can they take one their junior year? Well, I didn't do as good as I wanted to. I'm going to take the other one my senior year.
Yeah, so typically most kids take the ACT their junior year, but you can choose whenever to take it. We offer the ACT for free on our ACT testing day in February of their junior year. Um, we offer that to all of our students. We encourage all of our juniors to attend, um, that day. But there are Saturday tests that they can take. The, that's part of the reason why that number changed is because we had that backflow of ACT data that we needed to get, uh, from, from the state because there were kids still taking the ACT well into their senior year, um, late in their senior year, trying to, maybe, maybe there's a scholarship they needed that they, they needed to take that ACT one more time, um, something like that. So you can take it many times. Um, work keys, there are national work keys days, but it is just less popular because it's so new to the scene, so it hasn't picked up that steam. So, for our work keys kids, when did they take it? They took it in October of their senior year when we offer it to them for free on our October testing day. That's every single kid's data that we have is from our own testing day, not from a Saturday test or a different outside arranged opportunity for the work keys.
Great, thank you.
Doc?
Thank you. What's the percentage of students that take the ACT more than once?
Okay, I would have to look that up. Uh, ACT data is tricky to work with because we have to tie it to our kids. Um, because they don't have to have any of our markers, like when they register for the test. Um, so we would have to pull that, um, we would have to pull that data individually to figure out how many of them take the ACT, um, more than once. Uh, I will tell you, we had, when I logged into our portal the other day, um, there were about four hundred kids in testing year twenty-five, not graduation year twenty-five, those are two different things, in testing year twenty-five that already had an ACT score on file. So, it's pretty safe to say, there's probably at least four hundred of them sitting there that have taken it more than once because they already had one on file and they probably took it with us last week. Um, but I can absolutely get that number for you, Doc.
And then I'm curious, uh, from a curriculum and instructional standpoint, like what sets apart the, uh, students with like lower scores versus, um, uh, higher scores?
Yeah, that's a good question. So because the ACT is based off of ACT's college and career readiness benchmarks and standards, which are based off of the state standards and what colleges expect students to be able to know and come in and do. If we do our job and teach to the level of the standard of the courses that we're teaching, then we will meet the standards on the ACT. Um, I am not a believer in let's teach to the ACT. I'm not sure that there's value in teaching to the ACT. But there is value in teaching to the appropriate regular, rigor level of the standard in the published standards for the state of Kansas, which are things Kansas and other states obviously are used by the ACT to create the test for the ACT. You know, there's part of it, right, math? Did you get, did you get far enough along in your math career before you took the ACT, right? There's, there's pre-calculus concepts, trigonometry concepts on the ACT, right? Well, not everyone's going to be through pre-calc and trig and, um, so there, there are things, right? If we can keep you on a grade level and keep you on track to graduate, right? You're, you're through geometry and into algebra two by the time you take it. You have a much higher chance of being successful on the math than if you've never been exposed to algebra two and algebra two makes up, you know, a certain percentage of the math test, so.
Then a final question, uh, this might be difficult to answer. I'm curious, see, uh, like the percentage of students that, you know, they're studying for the ACT like outside of class, like if they're taking like, you know, um, ACT prep sessions, if they're, um, um, you know, again, things like that, so.
Yeah, we, we do have a couple of schools that offer ACT prep as a class. Um, and we do have a couple of schools trying that. Um, and then we also try to partner with our local universities that run ACT prep workshops so that we can publish those opportunities, um, and make them available to kids as they are interested in them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Melody?
Thank you. Uh, that, great, great presentation. I, I want to make sure I'm understanding that, when we look at the increase of the percentage of unique students scoring twenty-one or higher on the ACT or scoring a silver or higher on the ACT work keys from that thirty-four point two to the thirty-seven point seven, we're already at, right at thirty-nine or
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and that was a one-year goal. It was, we were supposed to hit the thirty-seven point seven by the spring of twenty-five and here we are in the spring of twenty-five. Check, circle it, mark it. Now what's the next one? Uh, that, and that's the work that we're going to have to do, uh, later this spring and this summer is, okay. What do we go after next? Do we go after forty percent? Or, or do we change the high school goal completely and do something different? I'm not in that camp, but there might be people in that camp. Uh, but I think we, we take the progress that we've made and can we make more progress? Is, is what I'm hoping ends up being the new high school interim goal one for twenty twenty-six.
And, um, that how we actually get to that thirty-seven or that, we're at thirty-nine now, how we get there is that we actually combine, if, if they've taken both, right? We can, we're combining those scores or how are we using?
Yeah, so if, so here are, let's see if I can get my mouse to work here. Um, this, this unique tested number that you see here, that's kids that took one test or the other test or both, right? So, if Timmy only took the ACT, Timmy is only in the number of students earning the asset if Timmy got a twenty-one or higher on the ACT.
So, if they took both of them, how are we listing them?
They, they got one of the assets or they got both of the assets, right? So if Timmy took the ACT and the work keys and Timmy got the work keys asset, but he didn't get the ACT asset, he's still counted as a yes because he got one of them. Because it's an or statement in the middle of the goal.
So we're counting that, um, whatever that score is because they actually reached our bench, which is the twenty-one.
Yes.
So let, so let's say if they, if that person received a sixteen point seven on the ACT, that's scratched if they take both and they get a twenty-one or higher.
If they get the silver or hi, if they get the silver or higher on the work keys, they, they count. If they don't get twenty-one or higher and they don't get a silver or higher, then they, there is, they're nothing.
Right, but I mean, we, we, we're not taking the sixteen point seven on the ACT. We would take a twenty-one for the
Correct. They're only in this number if they get a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, all the way up through thirty-six.
And I guess my point is, if, and we won't know what the average is and how, how much we've raised our ACT scores until when again?
Yeah, so the state publishes accountability reports and the last year's average, um, is on those accountability reports. And so we need to wait until KSTE published the account, publishes the accountability reports for twenty twenty-five and then I'll be prepared to give you that number. Um, becau, I mean, I can, right now, we're trending very well, but there's so much data still to be considered that I don't want to put a number out there and it not match what we eventually get from the state because that's just more confusing for people. Yeah.
But what was last reported is that sixteen point seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the last point is, it kind of appears as though we may be moving more in the direction of work keys versus ACT. I wouldn't have a problem with that, quite honestly, but I'm just, I'm just asking that question.
So I don't think it's
Giving you my observation.
Yeah, so I think, I'm excited that we had roughly the same percentage of kids take the ACT and the work keys. We had seventy-two percent-ish of our kids take the ACT and seventy percent-ish of our kids take the work keys. This is good. Now, I want both of those numbers to actually be higher.
I do too.
Um, yeah, um, but that seventy percent, let's call it seventy percent, this seventy percent and this seventy percent might not be the same kids. Right? Um, or it could be. Uh, because this seventy percent, there might be the thirty percent who didn't take the ACT might be like, you know what? That's not for me.
Right.
I know it's not for me and I'm not going to show up and I'm gonna, I'm not going to take the ACT on that day. But, that thirty percent that didn't take the ACT might be part of the seventy percent that did take the work keys because they're like, oh, that's interesting. Um, maybe that could be useful for me. We want both of them to raise because like Kelly said earlier, sometimes we slam doors shut on our future because we think they're supposed to be shut on our future. And we would like as many kids as possible to take both the ACT and the work keys because then we truly know what doors are open, um, for kids. And so that's why we want both of the per, percent, participation percentages and both of those to continue to rise. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lauren. I think we, the board has finished asking questions. Thank you for your presentation. Very informative this evening. Latona, next item?
Data update.
All right, as we transition, I'll, um, tee this up. We mentioned last month, we had, um, we had, hadn't been focused as much on student outcomes, uh, and our goals. And so, get a double dose tonight, um, of progress monitoring updates. Um, this one's a little bit new-ish that we don't, I think historically haven't come with, you know, this time of year with fast bridge data. Um, but I think, um, it's important for us to, for you to know how we keep an eye on, uh, the monitor or on the ball, so to speak, as the year goes on. So I'll pass it off to Holly and Amanda. Thank you for being here.
Uh, good evening. We're back. So we do want to connect what we shared with you in the good news items, um, related to this. So the five teachers, um, shared from elementary and the three middle schools were around these two goals. Um, so we're here to provide you an update around, um, our interim goals for middle school and high school around increasing our graduation rate, but those specific interim goals. Um, as I think you know, I'll introduce myself again. I'm Holly Ingram, Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction, joined by my, uh, better half, as I like to say, don't tell my husband, Amanda Scharschul, Elementary Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. So Lauren set the stage for us, um, on where we're going. So looking again at, uh, goal one around the strategic plan with the ultimate goal around increasing graduation rate. There's more transitions on this than I knew. So our two goals, um, elementary around decreasing the percentage of students below benchmark on third grade A reading from fifty-six point five to fifty-three percent by the spring. And then in middle school, decreasing the percentage of students below benchmark on eighth grade A math from sixty-three percent to fifty-nine point five. So those are the goals. We're going to give you some updates on where we're at related to our progress. All right, so where are we now for elementary interim goal? Um, you'll see we have both the fall A reading as well as the winter A reading scores. I do want to remind us that we came to you in September because we had previously been tracking the Kansas assessments for ELA. However, that test was changing, so we decided to switch our focus to A reading. We used a fall baseline for that because we had not consistently given this assessment to our third graders in the past. So that fifty-six point six was fall. Um, the, there's sixty-one point nine percent of our students right now who are not proficient, so we actually have declined on that goal. However, fifteen schools have them at the end of the year target, as well as seven schools have grown, but have not yet made the target. This is given three times a year. Um, we do not have the historical trend data that we usually have to know if this is normal or not for our students at this point in time. We hope to have that again at least next year. We'll have two years' worth of fall to winter baseline data to look at. But right now I couldn't tell you if this is, um, normal. What we do have trend data on is our other screeners that we showed you before, but we've never shown them to you in a winter to winter scenario. We've always showed them to you either fall to winter or fall to spring. And usually we can show you really decent growth on those early literacy screeners. So this represents winter of twenty-one to winter of twenty-four and the overall percentage point increase or decrease for our students on the, um, early literacy screeners that you're used to seeing. Letter name, letter sound, word segmenting, and then oral reading fluency is the CBMR. So you can see that we have grown in all areas, but kindergarten word segmenting across the past three winters, four winters, really. Um, and we've already looked at that kindergarten word seg drop to find out what's the root cause of that. Um, our learning services team, and we're already putting some things in place to prevent that from happening in the future uh, because we know word segmenting is really predictive of success in first grade as well. So as we look, um, at the factors that are influencing our data as well as next steps, I want to start on the left side here for a minute and talk about timing. So this year we did decide to push the fall screening window back two weeks. We did not move the winter screening window. So what this essentially did was it shortened the amount of time that our students were receiving, um, prescriptive instruction and tiered reading. Um, it did not change the fact that we had kids from August fifteenth until the window, but it did change our tier times for intervention. So that is thirty-seven days of instruction they got from the end of the fall screening window to the beginning of the winter screening window, which was two weeks shorter amount of time instruction they would have had in previous years. That matters. The second is we introduced really great reading as our new tier three intervention program for reading. It's not unusual to adopt a curriculum and for it to feel a little clunky at first, both for our students and our teachers, but also our system. So as we think about the processes and projects related to those curriculum adoptions, um, it takes a lot of effort to learn the new curriculum. um, it takes a lot of effort to learn the new curriculum, how it's supposed to feel, how it's supposed to go, what data we're supposed to look at, how we make adjustments. Um, and so we were learning and are still are learning Really Great Reading. It's also a highly prescriptive program. So our students who are most high-risk are in Tier Three Reading Intervention. And when I say highly prescriptive, that means that we not only have to screen students, but we also have to give them a diagnostic assessment to figure out exactly where the holes are. So when we push the screening window back, we also push the diagnostic assessment window back, which led to later placement in Tier Three Interventions this year. The third factor I'd like to talk about, I think is most important, and that's discrete versus complex skills. Um, often we answer questions about, well, why is your word recognition data looking so great? But then we take a state assessment, or we take an A reading and it doesn't look as good. Um, I want you to imagine all the things it takes to learn how to ride a bike. We have to learn how to pedal, we have to understand speed, we have to understand how to handle the handlebars, how to honk the horn. Um, all those things to get from point A to point B. An A reading assessment is all of those things. An early literacy screener is one of those things. So a student taking a letter name assessment is very different than a student taking an oral reading fluency assessment or a comprehension assessment. A lot of things matter, especially what the reader brings to the table. Background knowledge, academic vocabulary, understanding sentence structure, challenging language. And not all of our students have the same experiences to set them up for success in reading, whether they're a proficient word reader or not. So what are we doing about that? As you know, letters has been a huge part of our work for elementary. Volume one was those discrete skills. That was the word rec piece. Fifteen hundred and nineteen hundred of our teachers already done with volume one. They're actively in volume two. Volume two covers all those things I just talked about. Background knowledge, vocabulary, text-driven comprehension, and writing. We are also making sure that our administrators and instructional coaches understand, um, both sides of the reading rope, because when teachers feel empowered and supported and that they know their administrators and coaches know what they're supposed to be doing, we can really move some mountains. The turnaround is going to be longer. It's going to take us longer to turn the ship on language comprehension than it has for us to start turning the ship on word recognition. But we're identifying comprehension strategies. Right now, our leaders are out there looking for predominant instructional practices, both in planning and delivery, that we can identify as high leverage, so that we can start, uh, making sure our professional learning plans align to those strategies so we get the biggest bang for our buck. And I'm hopeful, especially if, as our state has decided that, um, the seal of literacy is important to say our educators understand the science of reading on both sides, um, that as we get through volume two, we're going to continue to see growth in, um, A reading, as we have seen in our early literacy screeners. I just would like for you to know that it will be a little bit slower than we've seen in the other test scores. All right, so as we shift to our middle school goal, around eighth grade A math, so in the fall, we had sixty-eight point one percent of our students who were not at benchmark, not proficient. And we have a slight improvement to sixty-six point seven this winter. So we did make progress towards that goal as a district. And thirteen of the middle schools made progress towards the year-end goal. We had a small number that went backwards, um, that we are continuing to dive in. As you know, or maybe don't know, we don't have all the discrete screeners in math, especially in middle school that you have in reading. Um, so I don't have that second piece of data for you, um, that Amanda has. But similar factors at place for us, um, the timing between fall and winter, a little bit different than middle school. We had, um, continued to work with our middle schools around tech deployment, knowing we're one-to-one, um, and had just some, uh, adjustments and struggles there. So we did bump back the window to give them more time, which then again addresses, um, less instructional time between the windows there. So just continuing to refine processes as, um, we are one-to-one as a system, which is a pro, um, in our middle schools, but it also creates challenges getting schools started, getting those deployed. Um, so then that just impacts when we can give the screeners, how quickly, and then the time between those as well. Um, and then similarly, we had both new curriculum in both core and intervention, um, in middle school math. So we adopted, uh, you all approved, a new core program for middle school and high school. So our teachers received training on that last spring. So this is our first semester using it full force. And then we have shifted using Math iXL for our intervention program, which has a diagnostic component. Um, so just giving our schools time to both learn the programs, learn the resources, learn what kind of data and supports are provided there. Um, so next steps, continuing to support teachers in professional learning and data analysis. We had, um, we polled our intervention teachers in November for kind of a deep dive. Now you've been using this intervention program. What questions do you have? How can we help you with that improvement? Then at our last District In-Service Day, had focus on both the core and intervention programs for teachers. And then just continuing to work with our principals and instructional coaches, um, on supporting teachers in that implementation. Anything that's new, you get started off, and then how can we continue to refine processes , um, for our teachers to make sure that they have everything they need to ultimately support students as we work towards this goal. So those are the highlights. Um, so what questions can we answer for you?
Does the board not have any questions? Knock?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, so fifteen elementary schools, uh, met the end of the year target. Uh, seven schools, uh, grew, but did not quite yet meet the target. Uh, how many schools did, um, uh, did not meet the target, uh, and/or like they're stagnant, or like even declined?
Yeah, we had very few schools that were stagnant. Um, I mean, so we have fifty elementary schools, so fifteen of them have already met the end-of-year target, so thirty-five of them are still below target. Uh, we are sharing that data with our principals here at PLA this next week, as well as with our instructional coaches on Friday. And they're really going to take a look at just what you said, is that growth data from winter to winter for, um, a lot of their early reading screeners, but then fall to winter for their A reading. Uh, we had quite a few schools drop, which is why you saw the drop in overall A reading percentages.
Do you think there are any like outside factors that would have like affected those scores?
Define outside factors.
Well, like poverty.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, earlier when I said what our kids bring to the table matters, it matters greatly. Um, how often they get read to at home, how often they experience literature, how often, um, they're not on a device, it matters. Um, kids come to school to learn, but we have to do a lot of gap filling for a lot of our students who have ver- very low background knowledge and very little language acquisition, especially the number of, um, second language learners we have, or even just low language learners we have. Um, we are constantly, yes.
And do you guys keep track of the, uh, like the number of students that, um, get additional reading programming from like, from like community mentors and whatnot?
We have a couple of different partnerships that we have through Wichita Collective Impact, Read to Succeed, Reading is Fundamental. And we do keep track, um, of the students in particular that are involved in those programs. Um, outside of that, if there are other community partnerships that are happening at individual schools, I'm sure those schools track them, but we might not on the district level.
And then for, uh, middle schools, um, thirteen schools made progress toward the year-end goal. How many middle schools, um, uh, either were stagnant or like actually had decreases?
I think it was five or six went the wrong direction. Uh, I gotta get used to the new number calculation of schools since last year, so.
All right, thank you all.
So one, one thing I want to make sure, I didn't raise my hand on the deal, but I, I, a question I have that I think you covered, but I want to, I want to reiterate. Um, the expectation went up as far as the benchmarks go from fall to winter, right? And so it isn't as though you had to jump over a five-foot high jump in the fall, and now in the winter, you still have to jump over a five-foot high jump. You have to jump over a, a five-foot, six-high jump. Is that, could you go?
Especially in elementary. So you might have, and I'll just use kindergarten as example, the fall benchmark might be three. Three letter names, three letter sounds. The winter benchmark is like thirty-three. It's a huge increase in many of our early literacy screeners from fall to winter. Um, you won't see as big of a jump from winter to spring, but it is traditionally in our data, it says that in the winter, we always have schools that take a hit because the benchmark raise is so high. Um, and if you take the shortened window of instruction time doubled with that, it's, is challenging to show the same amount of growth in that window.
And as you were describing challenges, you know, we talked about poverty, we talked about barriers, we talked about language acquisition. Um, what factor do you feel like attendance plays in, um, this, this data?
Attendance, um, cannot be, um, I don't know, highlighted enough. If students are not in school to receive the instruction they need, specifically if they have gaps to fill, those gaps will just continue to get larger. We all know that. Um, many of our elementary schools, reading core and reading intervention are in the morning. So even if a student is truant, tardy for thirty to forty-five minutes every single day, they are missing out on a lot of core instruction. And it is nearly impossible, if they get to third grade and do not have the skills they need, is nearly impossible to get those kids up to grade level. Intervention becomes so much more critical, core becomes so much more critical. Um, and if you have not been in school for your kindergarten, first and second grade years consistently, it matters.
Thank you. Melody?
Certainly. So when we talk about, um, basic needs, basic needs of our students, understanding that we have, what? Eighty-eight percent that are free and reduced lunch, somewhere around that, um, yeah. That those, some basic needs are more than likely not be, not being met for various reasons. And so when we try to equate, um, outcomes just on a straight and, straight level, and not factor in that some of our students are coming to school with deficits , um, for, for various reasons, once again, it's difficult. It's a challenge to really get them there without meeting their needs first. And, um, and I guess, you know, from a public school perspective, and this is a commentary, uh, but from a public school perspective, that's not what teachers are in the classroom to do, is meet the needs of a student. They're there to educate. However, that's what we're going to do from a teaching perspective in order to get them to the position or, or, or where they are capable and able to receive that education. I say all that, you know, just to really look at what our expectations are and who the children are that we're attempting to meet them with. So, um, we, we have to do, as a public school and as a school that has eighty-eight percent free and reduced, those are needs, that we need to really look at how we partner with community. Because I know you said that there are some community organizations, mentors, um, that partner with us to, to try and help fill that gap. Um, there's really, it, it would really, you know, be well-suited for us to look at how we can partner with, with other entities that are not our, you know, our teaching staff and/or our para-staff, quite honestly. Uh, that's my commentary. So next, though, I, I want to look at, and, and these are FastBridge results, both? Both are. So I know I was listening to, uh, NPR, and, um, there was a statement that was made about, um, the, the average reading, um, our percentage of proficient readers by the fourth grade, and it was forty percent. This is national. And so I'm, I'm just looking, I'm looking at us, and, and it appears as though what we're at, well, this is middle school math, so if we're looking at elementary, we're looking at approximately thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight point one at third grade only, third grade.
Third grade, and that's third grade.
Because our strategic plan has a third grade goal right now.
Sure. That's a, and that's a goal, but where are we now? We're, this is where we are, correct?
Correct.
So we're, we're correct, um, reading, we're at thirty-eight. We went down a little bit from the forty-three point four. So, so you know, we're, we're running close with a national average. And I see what we have in terms of, of, um, factors and how we want to meet our goal. And, and tell me again, what is our goal for, for elementary reading?
Yeah, we want to decrease the percentage of students who are not proficient on the A reading exam.
So, and we're wanting to decrease it to?
Fifty-three percent by the spring.
So that puts us at forty-seven?
So we need to go from fifty-six point five percent not proficient down to fifty-three percent not proficient. So forty-seven percent proficient, yes, if you, yes.
We're always looking not proficient versus proficient.
Yeah. So yes, forty-seven percent proficient.
Proficient.
Yes.
So that would put us higher, higher, higher than a, a national average. And I, I don't know, what, what are we at the state level?
That's a great question. Not all of us use the same types of screening assessments. Um, so I'm not sure that we would be comparing apples to apples if we looked into that.
Oh, well, that's-
Which is why the state assessment is, um-
That is the equalizer, supposed to be the equalizer. Okay, and so now to math, um, we're at, we did make a decrease in being not proficient, students that are not proficient, to the sixty-six point seven. Still keeps us at that thirty-three point three proficiency rate. And, and where are we trying to get to?
We want to get to fifty-nine point five, I believe. Is that right?
Okay, so forty-one percent proficient. And once again, I do see the, the next steps, um, the factors, as well as the, the next steps. It's just, it's just challenging. I know it is. I, especially when you see a decrease, a decline. I don't know how to capture it, but particularly when you see students that, when you see a percentage that we saw in the segmentation, or, yeah, the seven point seven for kindergarten. I think that's word segmenting, especially when you see that. Um, that has to be challenging. And what did we put into place in order to, um, correct or?
It's a little technical. Um, the FastBridge assessment actually, um, assesses students on four phoneme words, or four, four sound words.
Okay.
Um, so club instead of cub. And so our actual curriculum, HAGGERD, which is all phonemic awareness curriculum, does not teach four sounds until much later in the scope of the actual curriculum. So we were assessing skills that we had not even taught to our kindergarten students. So we are now implementing more four phoneme words into that daily practice so that when they see a four, or need to break down a four phoneme word, it's not new to them and they're not, not doing it.
Sure.
Um, so that was just more of like, let's get in, look at the data, let's look at the curriculum, where, what's going wrong here? Root cause analysis type of activity that we did and found something, and we're like, huh, this is probably leading to some of this, met with our instructional coaches, um, put word out to our kindergarten teachers, and we're going to see how that goes. That was a pretty simple solution. Um, they're not always that simple.
Right, and, but we think that's it.
Yes.
That's all that needed to change in order to really give them what they needed in order to be best prepared for testing.
And attendance. Kindergarten is historically the grade that misses the most school outside of pre-k.
Thank you.
So, so last thing I would say, I don't know if any of, who else has comment, but I do think you laid it out very well as far as some of the challenges. That is also what makes it so meaningful and so important, right? That, that these kids need this access to all of these skills in order to be successful in life. So, uh, and if they can't do this, they can't do what Lauren wants them to do later. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, see you none. Thank you ladies very much. We appreciate your presentation this evening. Okay, Latona, next item?
Consent.
Oh, Hazel did-
Um, Madam President, I'd like to request a short recess, please.
Okay, um, well, okay, motion made by Hazel, uh, seconded by Kathy. Do we have, Latona, can we vote on that with this? Okay. Okay, motion carries seven zero. We will take a ten-minute break and we will be back here at eight o'clock sharp.